Hello, welcome, thank you for coming. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic envelope. I'll just leave a blue stack more there. And before we get started, I am going to ask Councilor Stubbert to please lead us in the bud. Okay, first up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to discuss or talk about, let us know about, that is not already on the agenda for this evening, now it's time to do it. And if you're interested in doing so, I would just ask you, please go up to the podium and let us know who you are and tell us what you'd like to say.
I'm going to introduce myself first, and then my partners will also introduce themselves. My name is Nady Lazarian. I live at 4 Morel Avenue, and I am an artist.
And my name is Cheryl Care. I live here right in the downtown of Waterville, and I'm also an artist.
My name is Frank Delafanna. I'm an artist in Prossman. I am in the process of being a water from Waterville, Massachusetts.
So I'm going to be the spokesperson to start out. We would like to relay our recent experience with our attempt to purchase a city-owned building here in Waterville. The interest in this building began last fall of 2014 and has continued up until this point. Two weeks ago, we submitted to the city a written proposal with a deposit, a check, and because we had been told that the building was available for sale, and this is the building at Temple Court. We spent a long time doing a lot of research on the building. We did due diligence in every aspect of deciding whether or not this would be a suitable place to renovate and convert into live workspaces for two or more artists. So we are here today because this process has not been an easy one for us, and today we were told that the building is no longer for sale, and our proposal, our offer was returned to us. So as I was driving into town from Morel Avenue where I lived, I looked at these banners on Main Street which say "Converge and Create," and I really had to chuckle to myself because I wonder what that really means. You want, you have, I feel that there's this idea of wanting to generate an art community in Waterville, and we as artists really have attempted to do that and have been basically shut down by the city manager. We have no understanding of how this process works anymore, and I think that if the city is going to go forward with wanting to encourage artists to come into the community, purchase property, renovate property, then there needs to be a procedure put in place that is consistent and everyone understands how we can go about doing this. Anyone else?
And you had a, we had talked last week, you had been talking to Councilor Lucien, is that correct?
Yes.
Mike, do you want to address the issues and go through the process? This is the majority of the council here, this is the first time anybody's probably ever...
Well, actually, I sent this email to all the state council members, so they understand the process we went through from our early visiting of the building up into, we created a timeline up until the point that we submitted the offer, and then were told that it had to be, go out for public, we had to go out to bid, so it was posted for one day or part of the day, and then it was taken off the city Facebook page or wherever it was posted. And then it was today after Frank and Cheryl went looking for Gray Brown or tried to find out what was going on with the process. Linda Cody gave them this memorandum, which I assume from what it says, you folks will be getting at some later point in time, that the building is no longer for sale. But what's confusing to us is that it states in this memorandum that the building is not for sale for us, however possibly in the future if an entity like Colby wants to come in and own the building, then they might be able to buy it. So this is very discouraging to individuals who want to take the opportunity to work really hard and create something for themselves. I'm all for Colby's involvement in the downtown and improving it. Don't get me wrong there, I think it's wonderful, but do we, I don't think we want Colby or the Alphon Foundation to own the entire downtown. I think we have to have other people investing in the community as well. So that's all I have to say right now.
I remember getting your email, and I did follow up with you and did touch base with our city manager. Couple of issues that came up was the fact that the building is for accessing sewer water and so forth, what does have to be, it's connected to the former Alcori building to begin with. We had talked about this building almost a year ago, looking at the fact that it has come up several times over the past year, year and a half, that this would be ideal for someone to have as a workplace, a studio, and because what we're doing with Common Street and so forth, it's right around the corner, it makes sense. I believe when we talked, it's a matter of touching base with the main owner and getting some things straightened out which had not been straightened out and understanding what this is all about. And that's where it's been left.
So Frank can speak to that, because he had a lot of conversation with Gray Brown. He is a seventy retired contractor, general contractor from Massachusetts, so he's very knowledgeable about these things.
Yeah, so I've spent a lot of time with Gray, and Gray has given me a lot of input on who to go to to find out more information, sparks the testing of toxins in the building, and we've taken all the steps and actually contacted others to be able to solve the parking problem if it becomes inevitable. We can't solve with the town directly, because you're one of our neighbors if we give a story, it's three property owners. So this can be done through easements, which may or may not already exist in the original deeds, but until we have the time to do the research and then we can accept our offer, we plan to go ahead and acquire whatever we need to either get an easement through the current building and put it in separate meter, as has happened many times. I found out on Main Street, services go into buildings that are behind another building, and it looks like these are two buildings separate and then connected by a small addition of the utilities gates in the front building. Well, there are several scenarios right now that exist where meters, they sucker the pipe and put two separate meters so that all the utilities are going directly to the people that own the building. And the same thing can be done with park plan, the accessory plan right now shows some recent access to the loading units, a line on plan, but we have to find out exactly what the language is there and make it correct so that we can properly use it. And we're just looking for the opportunity to see our offer and give us time to do what we need to do.
Well, I'd just like to say I apologize for the frustration on your part. Obviously, this is not a great experience for you. I think this is just a great instance where probably communication, at least maybe on the city side, hasn't been great, because I know some of these issues are... See, I guess, I don't know if Mike, if you want to speak to this at all, but obviously I think we need to, we need to talk to you guys and get the details and work together.
Right, I certainly don't blame these folks for being confused, because a lot of that confusion is a result of my fault in probably not understanding better that building and what it has and what it doesn't have. So when the council voted last year to sell it to the owner of the main building, the Alcori building, there wasn't any question about parking, and there wasn't any question about utilities, because one guy was going to own both buildings. And then when he declined to buy it, we said, you know, well, we might as well put it out for sale, because he no longer wants it. And that's when I found out, and I probably should have known before then, but that's when I found out that building that we own now, the tax foreclosure, has zero parking, and utilities, water and electricity, come through the main Alcori building to the back of the building. Those are two pretty significant issues that need to be resolved, I think, before we just sell it to someone. A third item, and I did send this out to everyone today, a third bullet, that's not even listed here, which we just found out in the last week, is that there's a $36,000 IRS lien against the property because the former owner, who defaulted, had a significant IRS lien, and we're going to need another thirty days, I believe, to clear that up, if it can be cleared up. So that's, again, if we had done more of our homework before, but we hadn't done a title search until just recently. So that IRS thing is something that we wouldn't necessarily have known until we got to the point of saying, okay, if we're going to sell it, we better do a title search, see if the title is clean. It's not clean, it's definitely not clean. It may be clean in thirty days, but that's why I'm recommending to the council, and I told these folks yesterday when they're here, and again, they saw this memo today, that I'm recommending the facilities review committee talk about this. I certainly disagree with Mrs. Lazarian's assertion that we're denying selling it, because if you read the second paragraph, what it says, and I quote, "Prior to offering this property for sale to a party who does not own the front half, following issues needs to consider parking, utilities." So we certainly tempted, said we would not sell. Could you read the last paragraph? The last paragraph says, finally with the interest that Colby has shown in the downtown, it may in fact be best to wait to see if the main building is sold as part of redevelopment efforts. Right, I stand by that statement.
Now, is the main building for sale, Mike?
Not that I know of at this time.
Well, how is that relevant, then? You mean, the city wants to keep it until that building once again changes?
I think that's a legitimate question the city should talk about. Yes, we may want to keep the back half, because it may be very awkward for someone to own the front half of the building, someone else to own the back half, when the utilities are connected, there's no parking.
When we address the utilities, should we address the parking? And there is a dividing law between them, because they were...
I just think it needs to be discussed further.
And I would like to state that last Tuesday, when the meeting was postponed, you did state to us out in the hallway that the building was not for sale.
No, that's not true.
Could I suggest, I appreciate you coming tonight, we can apologize for the frustration, could we set up a meeting outside of here, and try to start hammering out something since I think that might be a better, I think, a greater spot.
Thank you. Sorry if we took...
Nope, that's what we did before. We'll catch up after, before, like, we have council representatives. Anybody else for community notes?
I'd like to congratulate the class of 2015, that graduated from Waterville back to last Thursday. It was a great graduation, a beautiful experience. Congratulations to the class.
Waterville PD, I heard did a great job today with response to, was it today or yesterday, to the first snatchings?
It was today.
It was today. And I heard that a lot of people said the response was great, and you guys done a man and...
We did, yeah. Worked out well.
Yes, sir.
I see, you're going to go over the municipal budget, the school budget, right?
That is on the agenda, yes, sir.
My next question is, if someone gets a hold of the budget offline, I found tonight, no way you can get it going online, if someone sits there and goes over item for item, Mike will be able to come back in the next meeting and talk to you people about the certain items that I do not like?
You can talk to us about it tonight or any meeting or...
I haven't had a copy of the budget. I mean, I'd like to be able to look at it.
We'll be looking at it two or three times besides this.
Okay, because I just want a chance to...
Are you talking about this school budget specifically?
No, I'll talk about the whole, the whole budget. I'm not, you know, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd actually appreciate that. I've been asking people to come down.
I just finished a $73 million budget for the main veterans homes last week, and we went line to line, and I just want to make sure my city is doing about the same thing.
Well, I'll give you more on that when we get to it, because I agree, we should be looking line to line at both the school and the city budget.
Absolutely. That's what makes it sticky than anything.
Anybody else for community notes? Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move to it.
All those in favor?
Close.
New business, resolution 672015.
Move to read by title only?
Second. A resolution providing for increase in the municipal outlay of fees. Move to it.
Second. All those in favor? Close.
This was correct, typo. You wanted a D, not a... Thank you.
Order 682015.
Can I have it only? Second.
There are copies of the agenda.
I had it right here. I thought you might talk a lot, like, what was your name?
Here, Patrick, you have the, for this pool here, you have this sheet, right? It shows a highlighted item.
Let me go back to see.
Need to move to it out again.
So need to...
Move to reconsider first, and once you vote to reconsider, then you approve the amended list of fees, and your copy should show that that amendment is from $70. I think you have to move to reconsider first.
$1 raise from last year.
Should I get a move to reconsider, resolution 6720?
Move to reconsider.
Second. All those in favor? Okay.
Move to amend the resolution 672015 to indicate that non-resident adults 18 and over will be charged $8 per visit rather than...
Second.
All those in favor?
Now we're voting amended resolution.
Oh, great, can I get a motion to vote on amended resolution 672015?
So vote.
All those in favor? All right, strike again for order 682015.
The order providing for approval of purchase and payment of severance arrangements hereby holding back the city council, city of Waterville acting as the municipal office as follows. With the city director of practicing recreation, we have the purchase of quality of the building by making a final settlement. The revenue of $6,000, the payment amount of $500, the fee for $1,000, these weapons being carried, and the total amount of CD of $500, and the said funds to be transferred to the facilities for dental care. Okay. Move to it.
All those in favor? Close. Oh, we need a roll call.
Councilor Stubbert?
This was a good...
Yeah, we didn't hear anything on that paper.
Yeah.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Port Thomas?
Yes.
Move to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor? Close.
In order providing for approval of forfeiture? Move to it.
Second.
All those in favor? Close.
Move to take a third and final reading?
Second. All those in favor?
For title only? Yes. Thank you. In order providing for approval of forfeiture? Move to it.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilor Stubbert?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Port Thomas?
Yes.
Order 702015.
Move to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for approval of forfeiture? Move to it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Move to take a third and final reading by title only? Second. In order providing for approval of forfeiture? Move to it.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilor Stubbert?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor Port Thomas?
Yeah.
O'Donnell?
Sorry.
O'Donnell? Hold on. You missed me. Yeah, this is wrong.
It's blank tagged.
Wow, somebody.
Somebody.
Councilor Stubbert? Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ray Port Thomas?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay, order 712015.
Move to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for authorization issuance of $4,500,7,500 of regular obligation securities for the 2015 Thomas College project. Move to it.
Second.
All those in favor? Daniel? You in favor?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion for a third and final reading by title only?
So vote. Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for authorization issuance of $4,500,7,500 of regular obligation securities for the 2015 Thomas College project. Move to it.
Second.
We need a roll call.
Councilor Stubbert?
Yeah, before we, before we vote, can I just say one thing? Somebody in the audience is kind of troubled by this. This is not the first time we've dealt with this. This is on the agenda for the fourth month as well.
And this is not funds that the city's obligated to pay, this is Thomas College taking advantage of the city's ability to borrow, hopefully the city is helping.
Okay, so Thomas College using your authority to borrow $4 million and eight and something like that.
That's right, yeah.
We're not straight now. I thought you were throwing out $4.5 million.
Oh, my God.
No, no, that ain't working. Thank you very much.
All right, can we get a roll call?
Councilor Stubbert?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
And Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Port Thomas?
Yes.
Order 722015.
Move to it. Read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for sale of city property, 12 Foyt Street. Move to it.
Second.
All those in favor? Can I get a motion for a third and final reading by title only?
So vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for sale of city property, 12 Foyt Street.
Can I get a roll call?
Councilor Stubbert?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Port Thomas?
Yes.
All right, we're onto new business. Resolution 742015.
Read by title only?
All those in favor?
Can I get a second on that?
All those in favor? All right, we'll read it.
A resolution providing for authorization agreement to use FAA and MDOT funds at the airport. Due result by the city council, the city of Waterville acting as the municipal officer as follows. The city manager hereby authorize the student agreement with FAA and MDOT to allow use of non-variety entitlement funds for crack ceiling at airport Neymano, $36,000, $7,000. This project was given by the MDOT and will be managed by the main DOT. No local funding is required to match the FAA and the main DOT funds. City's share of the funding will come from FAA funds received by the city on a annual basis. Vote to it.
Mike, so this is, can you just give an explanation for those in the audience?
The city receives non-tying funds every year for the airport, probably in the amount of that $36,000 number that you see there, and we can use them for all kinds of repairs and equipment purchases and things. Crack sealing would be happening on the taxiway, so we know that the Crosswind runway was rebuilt last year, and the main runway is rebuilt, is being rebuilt now. The taxiway is 30-year-old pavement with a lot of cracks, so MDOT through its bidding process has hired contractors to do crack sealing work at a lot of airports. So we're piggybacking onto their contract and not using any city funds, because these entitlement funds come to us from FAA or some...
Federal government.
FAA federal funds, yeah.
It's good timing, too.
All those in favor? Vote. Next, resolution 752015. Motion to...
Motion to vote?
Second.
Are you on session five, or are you...
Yeah.
Could you speak up, because I have a hard time hearing you. A resolution providing for renewal of special amusement license to the president and trustees of Colby College, doing business as Joseph's Family Spa. Due result by the city council, the city of Waterville acting as the municipal officer as follows. The city council hereby authorize the issuance of a special amusement license to the president and trustees of Colby College, doing business as Joseph's Family Spa, 5460 Mayflower Gate. Move to it. Further.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aren't you worried? I still have questions. This is a public meeting, correct?
Yes.
Well, everybody in this corner cannot understand the same thing that's being said.
She needs his mic, I think.
She needs a microphone, the rest of us should go off, you can't hear anything.
We don't have a microphone. And we don't have the...
Need to balance it out.
Well, what about the podium mic?
No, no.
A mic?
I think we just need to speak up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll do our best.
Could you read that again?
Want me to read that one?
Yeah, might as well read it again.
A resolution providing for renewal of a special amusement license to the president and trustees of Colby College, doing business as the Joseph's Family Spa. Due result by the city council, the city of Waterville acting as the municipal officer as follows. With the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a special amusement license to the president and trustees of Colby College, doing business as Joseph's Family Spa, 5460 Mayflower Gate. Better? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Next, order 762015. Next, order seven-six-two-zero-one-five.
Read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for approval of forfeiture?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor? Close. Yes. I am going to amend the order of things here because there's an ordinance at the bottom. I don't think it's going to take a lot of time, but I think the discussion of budget deserves a lot more attention. So I'd like to, for the sake of those here for the zoning ordinance, I'd like to get that out of the way. We'll do that now and then we'll move on to the rest of the budget. So we will call for, excuse me. I'm going to meet you going on. Ordinance seven-eight-two-zero-one-five. We're looking for it.
My show, that helps.
You need one to be yellow. Funny, neither of us have that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll only or read it in its entirety?
Read it in its entirety.
In ordinance providing for amendment to zoning Article Two, Section two point one point one. Be it enacted by the city council, the city of Waterville acting as municipal officer as follows. That the zoning ordinance Article Two, Section two point one point one, the official zoning map dated May tenth, two thousand and ten, and the written description of zoning boundaries dated July sixth, nineteen seventy-one, be and hereby are amended as follows. Accesso parcel thirty-nine dash one hundred, one thirty-three Water Street, currently zoned commercial dash B, C dash B, and accesso parcel thirty-nine dash one oh one, forty-one Carey Lane, primary zone residential C, R dash C, but including a strip of land approximately ten feet wide, zoned commercial B, are rezoned in the entire T and residential C. The rezoned parcels one thirty-three Water Street owned by Michael Blaisdell and forty-one Carey Lane located to the west of one thirty-three Water and owned by John and Anita King are found on the property map of the city of Waterville dated April first, nineteen ninety-two, as updated on April first, two thousand and fifteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Right, any discussion?
Mike, what's the purpose behind the rezoning, you know?
I think it's regarding the construction of a garage, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blaisdell is here.
I am Mike Blaisdell.
Yes.
My purpose of this is, I purchased the land from Woody Blaisdell back a month or so ago and I approached the, your town person to build a garage. He told me I didn't have enough room at a zoned commercial. I followed up through going to.
What anymore?
Ms. Bedlish. And she told me what I had to do. I came here, saw you folks a while ago, but I need to build a garage. I didn't have the land and I'm asking that it be rezoned to residential C so that I have the area to build my garage. That's what I'm looking for.
Ms. Blaisdell, did you buy, Ms. Blaisdell?
I'm sorry?
Did you buy forty-one Carey Lane also?
No, I did not. No, I tried to, but he said he had it sold. And whether or not it's been, I really don't know if it went through with whoever. I don't know.
Thank you. Since people are not there today.
Okay. All those in favor? Mike, you have something to say?
Let you take your vote.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I do have another request before we get to the budget, which could be a long discussion. We're hoping that the council will take a vote tonight to waive cloture. That requires a two-thirds of the council. The annual grant that the police department gets, which is called the JAG grant, just came in and it's got a timing issue. Money coming in, has to be approved through an order, three votes. So if we could take one vote tonight on approving this JAG grant, it could be approved in final format at your next meeting before the end of June, which we really should do. I'll let you just run the updated piece. And Chief Massey is here to help me explain, but this is an annual grant that we use from the federal government to purchase equipment to.
Yes, that annual grant that we get from DOJ is called a JAG grant, Justice Assistant Grant. And it's based on clearance rate and we get it every year. It comes through as a county grant that's divided up amongst municipalities within the county. This year it would just be, City of Waterville receiving part of that forty-eight and nine thousand dollars. City of Waterville, City of Augusta, and a portion goes to Kenan County Sheriff's Office. How portion this year will be twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And there's a number of purpose areas you can use it for. The technology, equipment, training, you could buy cruisers with it. There's several purpose areas that you can use it on.
Could we get a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt. Motion to waive cloture.
Yeah, right, the motion to waive cloture is first and then the motion to approve.
Motion to waive cloture.
Second.
I can't get it.
Well, I'll move it.
All those in favor? I agree, we'll move to pass the order.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. If there are any other questions, we'll have two more shots after the final two more.
Okay. We are now on order seven-seven-two-zero-one-five. Order seven-seven-two-zero-one-five.
In order providing for appropriation of municipal and school operating budgets for the period July first, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Be it ordered by the city council, the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. Budgets, the amount to be raised and appropriated municipal general of the school department operating budgets, including debt services, county tax, library, airport, maintenance, mid-main tech center, and adult education shall not exceed the sum of thirty-nine million eight hundred and eighteen four seventy-one. General operating budget for municipal departments. Be it further ordered that the sum to be raised and appropriated for operating budget for municipal departments, including debt services, county tax, airport maintenance, and library, shall not exceed the sum of sixteen million four hundred and sixty four thousand and thirty-five. General operating budget for school department. Be it further ordered that the sum to be raised and appropriated for school department operating budget, including mid-main tech center, shall not exceed the sum of twenty million nine hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-one. School department adult education budget, be it further ordered that the sum be raised and appropriated for adult education, shall not exceed the sum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and eighty-five. Estimated revenues, be it further ordered that the following sums be applied to the specific municipal and school department budgets to reduce the net amount to be raised by property taxation. And be it further ordered that if shortfalls occur, projected revenues, department expenditures shall be reduced according. Municipal revenues, state revenue sharing, one million eighty thousand, and general non-tax revenue, five million hundred one thousand three hundred and thirty. Municipal reserves, three hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifteen. Total municipal revenue, six million five hundred and forty-five four forty-five. School revenue, state aid for education, eleven million five hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fourteen. General non-tax revenue, two million sixty-five oh five one. Adult ed, hundred fifty-three thousand. Total school revenue, thirteen million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-five. Grant total revenues, twenty million three hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and ten. Summary, municipal, including overlay appropriations, fifteen million four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty. County tax, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Capital improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand. Transfer to tip funds, estimated, one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand and eighty dollars. Total municipal appropriation, seventeen million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifteen. Revenue, six million five hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and forty-five. To be raised taxation, eleven million one hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and seventy. School appropriations, twenty-one million three fifty-six four thirty-six. Revenue, thirteen million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand three sixty-five. To be raised by taxation, seven million five hundred and ninety-three thousand and seventy-one. Total to be raised by taxation, eighteen million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-one. Other funds, be it further noted that the following amounts appropriated from their respective funds for the budgeted operations as part of the total municipal revenues. Airport funds shall be four hundred and twenty thousand and fifty-five. Tax increment financing fund shall be four hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and fifty. Be noted that the sources to cover appropriations shall come from grants, fees, rent, state funds, and use of current fund balance. Be it further ordered, if shortfalls occur, projected sources, budget shall be reduced accordingly. Commitments, be it further ordered that the tax list shall be committed no later than August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Be it further ordered that all real estate and personal property taxes shall be due and payable on quarterly basis. Said quarterly payments due dates shall be second Friday in October, December, March, and June of the fiscal year. Be it further ordered that any payment or portion thereof not paid on the due date shall accrue interest at the annual rate of seven percent.
Now, Mike, there is an amendment on that.
There's a typo.
A two million dollar typo.
Right. If the council decides to vote tonight in any way on this budget order, at the very beginning, in the first paragraph, the thirty-nine million eight eighteen four seventy-one, that should be thirty-seven million, not thirty-nine million. As you all know, we started working on the budget in April. Really? City school budget should be adopted before the end of June. This is our next to last meeting in June, we meet tonight and next Tuesday. Budgets take three votes. If you don't take a vote tonight, we can't take three votes next Tuesday. We'd have to have a special meeting in June if you want to do it before July one. I guess I'm hoping that we can vote on some budget order tonight, just to take that first vote. It's the last vote that counts, someone said that earlier tonight. It's the third vote that counts, not the first. The first would give us an opportunity to get it done next Tuesday night if people are comfortable with that.
But I think there's obviously a concern that some of the numbers that we're dealing with, we don't even know. The state's not done their budget. So that's, we certainly should not pass a final budget.
No. So if we have.
It doesn't matter how far down the road we have to go and come, first vote, but the third vote should not be taken until we have those final numbers.
I agree. Even if it's after July.
Because already we're, the finance committee is meeting this Thursday with Eric superintendent to discuss the budget further. So obviously, we have a lot of work to do. I don't know if we want to take a motion to amend that to get this out of the way and then we can continue with the discussion on that amended number.
Mike, let me ask you this. If we amended that thirty-nine million down to thirty-seven million, would that reduce the?
No.
Total amount, now that's just a typo.
All the other numbers are correct, that was a typo.
Then move to amend, then that thirty-nine eight eighteen four seventy-one to thirty-seven million eight hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Very good.
Now, that thirty-seven million includes zero cuts and changes to surplus carryover, correct? That's the original budget that includes two and a half million.
That's the original budget that we started with back in April, you know, which came down to an additional amount from taxation of one million six thirty-three. I know I'm going to put this in a place where not everyone can see it, I'm sorry about that.
Can we, is there, can we not?
How about, that's close. Excuse me? So when we started with the budget back in the spring, city budget, school budget total was one million six thirty-three more than last year. The finance committee met a few weeks ago, recommended in their first meeting, a cut of six hundred thousand to this number, which brought it down to one million oh thirty-three. The mayor has suggested additional cuts, which do include some school numbers, which we haven't talked about at all yet. But those cuts, those reductions would bring the total to four oh two seven eighty-six, more than last year. That represents about a point six mil increase. I guess what I was hoping tonight, if the council wanted to, we could reach consensus on some questions about the city side anyway. Eric Haley's meeting with the school board tomorrow night. He's coming to the finance committee Thursday afternoon. Next Tuesday, we'll know a whole lot more of the school side. So obviously, that school side is a big unknown. If you want to take time tonight to talk a lot of the municipal side, Chuck and I and the rest of us are ready to do that. And then, you know, at least we'd have maybe some consensus reached on reductions on the municipal side.
All right. In this, what we're seeing here, if pay as you throw is repealed tonight, is that included in that?
Pay as you throws is.
Is repealed tonight?
Yeah, this number would be eight hundred and thirty-four thousand instead of four oh two. Right, so that's a big, so you could legitimately say, we're not going to take a vote tonight until we know what happens with the most.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, looking at the budget that we don't know about pay as you throw, the state has, they have a code there, but they don't worry, we're voting against something that is so unknown.
It's a good argument, yeah.
Here's my concern, and I want to bring this up. How many people hear about the email I sent to the budget? I haven't heard a peep. The mayor doesn't vote on a budget. So I believe from talking to the council that there is support for some serious reductions to the budget, to my mistake. But it's not going to happen, leave it up to fate. So I would just recommend that we either vote on the cuts and just do it, or I'd like to hear some suggestions from other people.
Mike, what percentage of the city budget, what is the percentage that the residents budget?
The city's spending is flat.
Do we have raising eyes at all?
On the spending side, no. Our big problem is on the revenue side.
That's right.
With revenue sharing, our loss in revenue sharing is almost one million dollars. So.
Not from last year, it's because we're taking a million dollars less out of.
In surplus.
Because we can't keep spending the surplus.
What about the three hundred thousand the state has given us this year to pay to our teacher pensions that we didn't have to ever pay before?
That's another item.
What about the fifty-five percent the state's supposed to send us for education every year, have maybe come close to fifty-five percent here in the border?
Not even close. Statewide, no.
But we've also had some, there's also some increases in the budget as well. This is a two-sided thing. I mean, here's the issue, we all know that we've had some reduced revenues from the state, that's a fact. But when it comes to budgeting, it's just about fair or what feels good. At some point, it's about being realistic of the fact that we are really pushing the envelope of tax rates to be fair. I know the council feels the same way. But we have to acknowledge the increases. We just did a little study this week and within five years, city payroll has increased about a hundred thousand dollars. Most of those are contractual increases. But our asset size hasn't grown. That's an issue.
I think it's a major issue. I want a second, because I received the email from Nick concerning cuts. And these are some that are going to be discussed, obviously, Thursday night at the finance committee. And I'm in full support of those recommended cuts. I feel like the budget as it is in wrong form right now is an abomination to taxpayers in the city of Waterville. That's how I feel about it.
That's how I feel about it. And I've gotten several, I shouldn't say several, probably a dozen calls from my constituents in my ward. And I throw my, my arms up in the air because I could get to hear from any councilor on this as, are they getting calls like I do? Now, I live in one of the most affluent neighborhoods in Waterville, and, uh, some of the biggest and largest taxpayers in Waterville. And they're crying for our tax relief. And I'm hearing them loud and clear, but I, uh, I get to hear or see or feel the passion for really serious concerns about our tax rate, our mill rate, all of this, and we, and I sympathize with the fact that the state hasn't come and done their part. I totally sympathize with that, I agree with all my fellow councils on that. I think it's the grievous thing that the towns and municipalities in the state of Maine are, are taking a lump, you know, for the administration that's there now. But I will, I will also say that we are here at the courtesy and the beck, becking call of our constituents. And I said, we have to represent everybody that's in this audience, everybody that's in our neighborhoods. And, uh, my, it's very loud and clear in my ward what people want. And, uh, I intend to follow through and oppose any kind of raw budget the way it is written now without legitimate and serious causes. Can we speak?
Yes, sir, come up to the podium, LCR.
My name's Kelly Nguyen. I live at twenty-three Kelsey Street in Waterville. I was born in this town, I graduated from town, I spent thirty-five years in the army, and I retired in two thousand and one. Now, get to the point. I live on a military retirement. Try it, it's hard. Your taxes, if you're going to give to us, not count the reevaluation we're going to get hit with, plus with that pay-as-you-go, which is a hundred and something dollars a year, plus the taxes you're talking about, three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars a year. Whatever the government gave me was one point two percent last year, it's gone. I'm not working, where am I supposed to get this extra money? You're chasing people out of Waterville. People are leaving because of the fact that you cannot afford to live here. You take Kelsey Street. Ten years ago, there used to be about twenty, there's twenty homes on the street. There only used to be up to four or five apartments. Where I live now, there's four of us left that own our homes, rest of them are all apartments. We're paying the main bulk of the taxes. How many taxpayers do you have in this city? I bet there's fifteen thousand people in this city, I bet you there's five thousand taxpayers, you're lucky. And all you do is you keep piling on, piling on, piling on. People are leaving. I didn't want to leave this town. I came back here to live here. With your taxes, you're killing me. You, you don't say it's a tax, it's a little in here, little here, little there, little here. We're dying. All I have to say, I'm dying, it's hard to handle it.
I appreciate that, and I think it points out the talk that we've been having about, uh, when you, we've got to change the way we do business.
Go along with your budget.
Broad, broad, uh, pay increases and, and things like that that are just built in three years in advance. And my concern is that we're going to kind of ham and paw at the end of the day, some budget passes, that nobody's really looked at in between meetings, and, and there was a big increase in it, and it's...
Well, what happens when the governor announces again a surplus in the state government, which essentially constitutes what he has deprived municipality of through revenue?
Yeah, the city's lost, what, four million dollars in the last four years, Mike? But, that's a but.
Yes.
To the gentleman's point, people are moving out. It's not about, we can't, I can't change the governor's budget. What we can do is hold the line on the Waterville budget until we, uh, have put some investment and get behind economic growth, until we expand the tax base, until we get back manufacturing jobs where people actually make money. You gotta hold the line at some point. I'm not going to stand here and say, I think every cut we looked at was great. Well, I think it's great to reduce paving budget by fifty thousand dollars. No, I think that stays, but it's, it's...
It's an absolute?
It's an, it is what it is, right.
Let me say, I have a friend who lives...
Uh, council, yeah, Chris, come up, I'm right up.
I have a friend who lives on Cold Street, and I was visiting her, in Cold Street, out in the neighborhood. She's spending forty-five hundred dollars a year on taxes. And she's showing me her tax bill, like, I can't afford anymore. What do you want me to do? Because I'm working for a job, and I work with my mother. Who's going to fix the income? So, where does that appeal to us? I mean, no one wants to make cuts. No one wants to cut the school budget, no one wants to cut paving. But we all want, as you said, to drive people out of Waterville. She's working up in New York.
You lift your, your rate. We're going to be over twenty-nine something a mill. Any other community in the state that high?
No. Jerry? I, the only thing I will say to that is that we, the property valuation doesn't mean your taxes are going up. It means that what's going to happen is your tax bill, uh, and Paul Songway is here, Hercule Proust, will mean that you'll start being assessed at closer to a hundred, because right now you're only assessed at, what, seventy-nine percent of your value?
Eighty.
Uh, it's a revenue neutral move, so technically, the way it should work is that you get then taxed on closer to a hundred percent, and the mill rate goes down. Doesn't mean it's not higher than most account made, it is if you look at the state of Maine. It is higher. Pierre, would you support holding the line on the school and city budget?
Um, if we vote tonight on the board, I just feel comfortable. We have, like I said, it's an unknown, uh, at this point, I would, I would vote no.
Anybody have any suggestions that they've seen or got?
Well, this individual associate, we're waiting to talk.
Mr. Rainford, sir.
Chris Rainford, uh, two chairs right there. I just had a couple of questions. Um, first of all, why would this fader's recommendation double if the pay as your, the trash gets thrown out?
Uh, because the way pay-as-you-go works now, uh, well, let me just go back. I feel it's easier if you start at the beginning. You used to have, you know, a hundred percent of your trash paid for through your mill rate, through your, through your property tax. Uh, over years, spending increases as well as cuts from the state created a gap in the budget, and so the money that used to pay for your trash went to pay for those increases in shortfalls, and now your trash is paid for mostly by the three hundred thousand dollars of revenue that's coming in through the bag fees as well as the reduction in tipping fees, which was about a hundred and thirty dollars. So, the net difference to the city is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So that contract that ends in three years or whatever is going up?
Well...
It's not a...
Well, if pay-as-you-go ends tonight, then, then we're not making money off the bags. The curbside recycling is as good as gone, because that costs money. And so, the, uh, the amount of trash will go back up, we presume, to the prior levels, and, uh, the payment for that will simply just go back into your mill rate rather than through the bag fees.
Right, but, I mean, the trash will up in three years, probably, if, when they...
Yeah, I think, I think you say, definitely will. We do have a solid waste committee, uh, that we recently appointed, and the goal of that committee is to now be looking at the alternatives for what we're going to do then, because realistically, we're probably going to have to decide as a city what we're going to do one year from now. We can't, you know, because in order to prepare for two thousand and eighteen, really, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, it's going to be wanting to make those decisions before, before we get to the end of that, because they're going to...
Um, I lived in Southern Maine for a little bit, and the city provided special trash cans, and there was one per household, um, which is basically what the bagging is, but the city provided the trash cans, you didn't have to continue buying bags every week, which cut down on the trash, because if you only put four bags in there, that's all you go out with. And it didn't cost the homeowner, you know, ten dollars or more.
Well, it didn't, but, uh, I think the offset to your mill rate is actually the revenue from the bag. It's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars comes into the city roughly through the bag revenue. So it's either going to come from your property tax, or it's going to come from the bags. You can take away the bags and it's back to your property tax.
And the, uh, any question about the tax rate also? Is it, um, the budget passed, well, two fifty from the current rate of twenty-seven, whatever?
That's not going to handle it.
I remember reading an article in the newspaper, that may have been last fall, I was this winter, um, about the, um, redoing the taxes in the town, um, assessment. It said something about the eighty percent, and the mill rate dropped, and I believe it was twenty-four dollars. I'm not...
I don't know, Paul, we're not going to know.
But that's not mentioned anywhere that I've seen, we're just showing this, it went up to twenty-seven.
Well, if the mill rate drops, but your value goes up, you're going to still pay the same money.
Or if your value goes down, it stays, your value could stay the same, and your mill rate will go down, you'll still pay the same. Or if your value goes down...
That's a year away.
Then, then like you, you know.
Yeah.
It's not until next year, though.
Well, my, my only concern is probably the same as yours, Nick, is the tax rate keeps going up to a point, what he's saying, um, what if you can't afford your taxes anymore? Who's going to buy health sets, say, forty years old, for the taxes being four or five thousand dollars? So, what do you, what do you do, file bankruptcy? I mean, what's it going to be for us when we retire? Ten thousand a year?
Huh, I think that's...
I mean, it's got to solve some way.
I hear you, I know.
That's all I want, I just want to speak.
I appreciate it, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Talk about your trash bag, please.
Yes, sir, LCR.
Uh, Carl Foss, Ward Four, I don't really have a complaint or anything, I just have a question. So if the state doesn't have their budget by July first, the state has to shut down. So what happens to the city if we don't have a budget by July first?
We just keep operating as is.
On last year's budget?
On last year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Carl.
I'm Gene Lagg, I don't usually come to speak at these things, I just have a couple of comments. I think I speak for a lot of people that are getting towards retirement years. I'm probably one of the more fortunate ones to have a, I live in a nice area, I have a decent income. But if I want to stay in Waterville and maintain the property I have, and Nick knows where I live, I'm not going to be able to do it and survive. And I'm one of the lucky ones, so I'm wondering where everybody else is in this city. And my other question is, and somebody else brought it up, us taxpayers, I think we're in the minority in this city.
Obviously.
And so, we're paying big taxes to support hungry people, along with the colleges and the churches and all the people that don't have to pay taxes. Quite frankly, I don't see myself retiring in a long ago. I really don't. And my mother-in-law owned a house in Westboro, Mass., which is far more affluent than us, with a house four times the price of mine, and her taxes were less. So, something's seriously wrong with...
Well, I can tell you, part of the problem is the fact that we're thirteen square miles, and like you said, we're one-third tax exempt, and since, uh, most of the good paying jobs left in the mid nineteen nineties, we've lost about two thousand residents that share that burden. Uh, that's a huge number, when you go from, I believe it's about, I believe it's about two thousand residents since the nineteen nineties. So that all, that all plays into it, unless we turn the corner. And I think, you know, not everything is bad, we have some great stuff happening, but we need to hold the line until it does. You've got to increase the revenue source before you even increase the expense. That's how business works. Got it. Thank you.
I'd just like to make the comment, uh, long-term, there's only one solution, and that is broaden the tax base. Because right now, the tax burden is on the residents. It should be on businesses, but we don't have the businesses. So we've got to attract businesses to Waterville. Kobe has some fantastic plans that is going to increase our tax revenue. But we've got to get private enterprise in Waterville. We've got to get, uh, major employers to locate here. That, that's the only solution. You can't deferrate the taxes, we know that.
Yes, Mr. Oakley.
Steve Oakley, thirty-five Ticonix Street, I'm right there. And let me straighten something out first, because I've heard this repeated. Somehow, if you rent, you're not paying taxes. When a landlord builds a budget, it's included in there the cost of taxes and utilities. So to say that somehow or infer that tenants, that people who rent are not paying taxes is absolutely incorrect. That is, that is not right, and, and that's quite frankly, a little bit demeaning to people who rent. And I think, because that should be straightened out and made, made public if that's straightened out. Beyond that, I, I completely sympathize with the dilemma. And I know, and, and this talk of growth and so on, but that won't happen for three, four, five years. I'm, I'm convinced of that. Uh, we don't have the labor force to offer, we don't have the trained labor force to have, offer, we don't have the training programs. So where we are now is stuck in that primary equation that the mayor, uh, just, uh, talked about, which is thirteen square miles and one-third of it is exempt. So where does our focus go? I think, I think that our focus has to go toward the legislature and correcting some of these issues. I mean, there is a, um, I, I talked to, to Paul Songway the other day, and, and there is a pilot program law, and, and without that law, then Seton Village would pay nothing for, for, uh, I don't know, it's probably fifteen acres of, of property, not to mention the buildings on it. Uh, so we need to be able to get there with this thing. I, I think that if you think we're going to just grow our way out of this, I think that's naive. I think there is, that we have been drained and disenfranchised by Augusta. And, and, and we need to address that, and we need to progress that as a city. I think there are a number of ways to do it. I'd be willing to discuss that strategy with anyone. I mean, we have a lot of talent in the city, some of it that doesn't provide you with municipal revenue. But we do have voices, and we do have concerned people, obviously. And so, if those people have those resources, uh, and are paying taxes now, decided that they would organize a, a competent and professional lobbying, uh, group to regularly go to Augusta during session, before session, to, to get certain pieces of legislation amended, and then to lobby for that, I assure you, I've seen that in the past, that an effective lobbying campaign could, could turn that corner, because I'm looking ahead. I don't know what you're going to do here. This is brutal. This is, this is an untenable situation. But I think we got, we have to look ahead, or else we're going to turn and ask the legislature to disincorporate us and take on the governance of this municipality. And I think that we're, we're really stuck between a rock and a hard place that's not of our making at all. Thank you.
Steve, uh, thank you, but I appreciate your passion on this. I, I don't disagree with everything you said, but I also don't think that our answer relies wholly focusing on legislature. The reality is, I don't think even the growing pains that we have right now are totally unique just to Waterville. I mean, this is a, we are living in a new time, we're probably not going to have a factory with three hundred jobs, we're going to have to look to companies with ten and twenty and thirty jobs that pay equal wages. Um, and, you know, we are turning the corner on some of these things, but, uh, in regards to this budget, and until we get there, you're right, it might be a couple of years, and it might be a couple tough years. We have to show some goodwill to the base that's here. We've got to hold the line, um, and then we move on from there and focus on those things. You know, we, we have to, we have to be in charge of relying, relying on lobbying in Augusta. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't, you know I was down to Augusta? I, I absolutely disagree with the cuts in revenue sharing, considering the fact that we are loaded with mandates that we didn't ask for. We don't have local control on a lot of things, particularly in our schools. I mean, we're heading, uh, we're paying out the nose for some of this stuff, but, uh, the answers are here. But that leaves us with a vote.
Do we, uh, move to table the first reading of the budget till after we've had our...
Michael Cruz.
He's hiding behind that screen, I know. Pay no attention to that man.
Should we table the budget this evening? Uh, does the vote on the budget have to take place at a regularly scheduled council meeting, or can we have?
No.
You could ask a question.
So we can have...
So we do have two more Tuesdays after next Tuesday, the twenty-third and thirty.
So we do have two more Tuesdays after next Tuesday, the 23rd and 30th. So we have more chances. We just have to schedule a special meeting.
But if we do, I really, we've got to give it a work and hammer something now. We know, we can estimate a couple of the state numbers.
Right.
And see where they come in. We'll find out tonight about maybe through office.
Right.
It would be enough to say we have much more sense on the cuts going forward. I'd love to hear from you. I have been begging people to look at this budget and to look at the lines and to offer suggestions. And I think you are the first person to have a populist, is that the word, is how you want to do something?
Although I think it's pretty clear that this council not going to vote for a 2.5 million.
Oh, no, no, no. I have no fear that this council is not going to pass that. I think the fear is that we vote on it like it looks like we're voting to it.
It looks like we want to.
Right, Fred. Fred.
Then I'll go ahead and move to the, I don't know if tables are right or whatever, but close form.
Close form.
Close form of the vote on this meeting.
Okay.
For the first one.
And I'll send it out. All those in favor?
Close form to the next Tuesday morning. And the finance committee will have a chance to work on it.
We will be meeting this Thursday. We'll still have to focus on that budget, but we only can do one at the next Thursday.
Well, technically, you could do two at the next meeting, but you have to have a following meeting because it's a service. You can't do three at once. Yeah, well, close form. We still need three more.
He didn't take a vote to approve anything. He did vote to close form. All right. Now, Mike, are we going to do a presentation first? None of the managers' reports? Is that what?
Looks like Mr. Gilbert's getting ready. And Karen knows light, so it's switched probably is what we're going to want. Yep, take it up.
Well, most of you probably don't know me. My name is Urban Gilbert. My family's lived in the area for over 200 years and I've only recently moved back to Waterville. And I'm here to present this draft vacant abandoned building ordinance. And I think...
Before you just have a... Let me bring you up to dinner where the council is.
Sure.
We have an ordinance. And we're sitting on the ordinance right now because the state is considering a legislation. The city attorney asked us to wait until the state makes some kind of decision. So we do have an ordinance that's ready.
I appreciate you filling in. I didn't know that. And that's something I was going to comment on.
Okay.
We do know. But thank you, sir. But thank you. I want to thank the council and everybody in the city for allowing us to present this. And we moved really quickly. And speaking of, like you said, we do know that ordinance has been voted on for a while. And we just try to throw it out there again, for you to look at. And we know that the state legislature is looking at it. And we realize that actively decide everything they're doing, we may even still have to go further.
I think we'll do.
Yeah, right. Well, anyway, as I said, I'm Urban Gilbert. And this is a draft vacant abandoned building ordinance. And we, I'm a member of SENA, the Southern Neighborhoods Association. And the city of Waterville has structures that are vacant and abandoned and our ordinance is to, as you can read, reduce or eliminate the light, which includes mattresses outside the buildings and trash and anything else, and to try to eliminate the crime, public usances, and try to hopefully enroll property values, but leaving up. So the primary purpose of the ordinance, it encourages property use to renovate, sell or tear down, because it is terrible light and so much. And here you can see a definition of abandoned building. Any building used or ought to be used as a residence or business is completely occupied for 60 days, excluding, as you can read, permanent warehouses, garages, refrigeration rooms. And if there's no construction or business going on or residential use, and if the building requires repair to be legally reoccupied, that is our definition of abandoned building. Now, one of the big things about a lot of this is the hazards to firefighters, and those symbols, icons represent international organizations or firefighters and so on. And it is a real hazard to these people who, you know, that has a structural collapse or fire. Many people have died this way. And when you have this kind of light and trash and things in houses that are vacant or still occupied, still look like that, the fire will spread further. And we just don't want that happening. And the tiny property values, the lighting, as you're driving around different parts of the city, I think especially in the South End, that there's an awful lot of just junk lying around, broken windows, broken buildings. And you just want to try to create some of this better. And this evidence of abandoned vacant abandoned buildings, and here's some of the things that we're talking about, that several of us have gone around the city, taken pictures and walking and whatever. And there's just junk, trash, debris on the properties. And it seems in some cases, no one cares. This is a building that is vacant or abandoned. You can see various things when you look at some of these houses.
That's actually a bullet dangerous mall that I'm living in.
I didn't go in. But yeah, that's a dangerous kind of thing also. It isn't just mattresses only on. But here's a house in the South End. I took a picture of it. On the left, boarded up, both doors. Nobody's around. And obviously, the one on the right is just, you know, all cardboard over the windows. Many buildings have broken windows everywhere. And not many people want to buy these kinds of buildings. So we want to have the ordinance to strengthen them. They have fines. They're attracting vandalism on all houses. I live in the corner of summer in Sherwin's. Very nice house. But there are houses that, right down the street there, they're being opened into. And not much to be done about. So anyway, this is a picture of a swimming pool. That's, I didn't visit this one personally, but this is dangerous.
Is it not fenced in?
That's the house we're managing there.
Yeah.
There's a fence, but it's, the fence is broken. And these are... And some of these, it's pretty obvious. If you look at some of these houses, just cursor you look to the outside, you know, they're boarded up, windows, broken windows. Doors are caved in in some places, right down the street from me, and kids are going in there. And we've got to get rid of these buildings. And as previous slides showed, they either got renovated or tear down, so something.
Now it's hard to see.
Anyway, this is the implementation of the ordinance, or I can't say names, ordinance 90 days after an ordinance is approved, application for vacant building, code enforcement, inspection, resolution of the issues, and suggested fines. And again, either renovate it, sell it, or tear it down.
Does it have to take a year to do all that? I just saw it said one year and then it skipped to the one where you sell it.
Well.
One year for the first year fee and then the subsequent years could be higher.
See, a lot of the owners don't live around here. A lot of the owners are out of state.
Who are you going to get? They pack their bags and leave. They have to go through legal acts. It takes time.
And here, you can see, there's some exceptions to the enforcement. Active evidence of marketing or, you know, certainly building permits that have been issued. Even if something looks like it's in bad shape, if we can find the building permits for an issue, that's an exception to the enforcement. And finally, tear down if we have to. And those, again, are fines and there are orders of appeal and others, you know, allowed by law and name. And this is the bill that Mr. Sutter was speaking about. And it is not, I believe, our representative who's here for this.
You told him what I said.
And so we know they're doing that. And we know that they're trying to get something to pass, there's some teeth in it. But again, as Mr. Sutter was saying, and I was told, and I also know about this, that, you know, we may have to go further than whatever the state legislature suggests.
No, we have to have an ordinance.
Well, I know we have to.
The bill requires.
I told Nancy, cut me off.
Also, there's some interesting language in that bill, if I may, that we're not quite sure why exactly the legislature is adding that language in there, because we haven't been involved with drafting the bill. But it could be that the cities of Lewiston, for example, and Bangor, and other cities that have been involved in that bill are having issues with enforcing their ordinance. And that may be why they're going to the state. But the state is not a detailed process. It's just tries to cover some of those holes where those cities need more information that they can legally get hold of. For example, admin state representatives. So if you have a situation where someone is in a community and they've disappeared, basically, you know, once you get ahold of them, you say, you have to have a new state representative because they're sick of trying to find you in Hawaii. Okay? So those are the things that states are also looking at. That also happens to be in a proposed ordinance that we haven't drafted. I think that Fred also had.
Hey, is there any, hey, this is going to the legislature?
I spoke to Tom and what he said was, we should go forward with our own ordinance and then, you know, change it if there's something in it that the legislature reflects differently than us. But frankly, we should be involved with the legislative process. Because there's some of the things that I've seen in their law, it seems to me to be a bit too onerous, would take more time to do things. But I don't, since I haven't been, we haven't been involved, we don't know why they are putting those languages in there. But more work.
Fred, you're right. I fully support abandoned building ordinance for the city of Waterville. We have somewhat of one, but we could have a more stricter one. And I think that needs to be looked at. And of course, I know Fred's working on one or has one just about finished. And I think that has to be looked at again and seriously discussed and implemented. Because I sympathize with all these pitches, because there's a lot of dangerous property out there. There's a lot of out-of-state crime coming into Waterville and taking up residence or manipulating some of these properties as some of their catch basins for crime. There's a lot of, like you said, light, tearing down the property values, the property adjacent. I had talked to many of my constituents that live next to this trash. And they're up in arms because they really want something done seriously, because they feel like their property value is next to nothing, living next to it. And they feel powerless to do anything. It is nothing more aggravating for a resident to live next to something like this and feel absolutely powerless to do anything about it. And that's where they have to lean on people like ourselves to come in and get something done about it. And I think we have to be a lot more aggressive with what we're doing here as far as a community to address these situations. And I'm sure Chief Massey will agree that these lights and these properties are hotbeds of opportunity for crime and other unfortunate things to happen.
Can be.
I totally agree with you. But, you know, this kind of goes along with the city budget. We need to get through that first and talk about this because if we're going to enforce something like this.
Please come out of the presentation.
Another code enforcement officer.
Well, if I may comment on the last slide, I'll use the last slide. This goes along with what I've heard from people speaking about the budget area. We don't all talk about it. We don't all get together. We don't all express our cooperation between all the departments in the city. The city manager, the community development, the buildings that are required by the police, assets of treasure, citizens. And I will add that some of us at SENA have been meeting with Chief Massey about getting the crime watch better. And that kicked out some of these things. A lot of these buildings, until they're either fixed or abandoned.
Through the water streets.
Yeah.
And we thank him for his contribution.
Have you counted on the number of vacant buildings?
Oh, jeez.
The numbers either are between 700 and 1,000.
Well, it's hard to really discern if a place is totally vacant. You know, it's like Nancy had said, me, some people go to Florida. I've been going to Florida and, you know.
But you drive through the South End at night, you see a lot of buildings with no lights on.
That's another thing that you, we've been walking the streets, as Nancy said. We've been driving around. And personally, I've had three knee operations recently, so I've been driving around rather than walking. But it's still hard to see as you go by whether you're walking or not. There are some obvious places. There's no question, there's criminal activity. There's no question that they're vacant, but there are other buildings that is really difficult to tell.
Well, and I have to say, Fred, that as we walk through these places and we look at these houses, I, every time I walk by, I want to say, that's abandoned or that's vacant. But then it turns out there's a car there. People are actually living there. All right? So it's really hard to say.
Well, right now, you guys could walk down Water Street and you could walk right by the house I just bought and think it's abandoned. Because I'm not living in it. I'm just doing my thing with it right now.
Right.
And you folks would think that's an abandoned place. I haven't mowed the grass out back.
That's right. And I hope you didn't take the picture of the house.
I believe us. All right. But no, it's, you know, you don't know. Like you said, you just don't know.
You can't tell.
You cannot tell. I own this building. I'm refurnishing the inside of it. But you folks are standing here saying, well, the South End, the South End, the South End. I'm moving back into the South End to try and help this folk.
It's not just the South End.
Oh, no, I know.
Some of those with Ward 7, Ward 5.
Some on Main Street.
To help focus on this. But I drive school bus for Waterville. I have all these little kids that are this big, that I see some of the places these kids live in.
I know. It's struggling.
And I agree with you.
I'll raise your picture from my iPhone.
I have a bad hand, so I'll raise you fast.
And I just want to add to your presentation that I think what's really interesting about this is that when you look at other cities, for example, Portland, they require not just the code of officers inspection, but also police and fire. And all three departments look at these buildings and they have a say in what needs to happen to a structure or damage. They have a say with police and fire if there's an emergency and they need. So anyway, I guess the last one?
Well, okay. Yeah, go with it. Anyone can read it. But we feel we need to appoint a committee of city officials, citizens, committee of reviews, ordinance, and other councils, committee of interviews, other city officials for similar ordinances. And we have a draft ordinance that comes with review. I'll find a draft and we really know what we've got covered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the...
Thank you.
Last thing on the agenda, the manager's report.
I'm all set. And voting to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned.